Good evening, everybody. Calls are ordered at 6:30. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 4th edition of the whole school board meeting. All of our board directors and attendants, Director Pendergraph is joining online and except for Kerry Hodge, who wasn't able to make it. We also could invite him, yes, on the next load. Thanks for being here, and would you mind if we had a simple question? All right, so briefly stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we come.
That brings us to Agenda Item 2.01, which is our special meeting agenda. Please have a motion to approve our special meeting agenda. Sure, I move to approve Meeting Agenda Item 2.01.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Haley? Got a thumbs up, okay, good enough. Motion passed, 4:00, thank you. Brings us to Agenda Item 3.01, which is public comment. We do not have any public comments, right? So we will keep on moving. To Agenda Item 4.01, which is our student board report, and yours, Olivia.
All right, so there's going to be an elementary color run with high school volunteers promoting our community climate and allowing for an interactive partnership between elementary and high school. The high school recently held a future freshman night where incoming freshmen could come here, presentation, check out some clubs and activities, offer to the high school, and get a tour from Bearcreek Volunteers. This is vital to the climate and culture of our district, welcoming new students and helping them become acquainted with the high school and ready to engage as freshmen next year. The Mario Park tournament at our high school just wrapped up, which is just one of the really inclusive welcoming events that leadership puts on throughout the year. It's really important in promoting an open and accepting environment for people with all different interests in our school. There's going to be a job fair, a job fair held after school at the high school on April 19, which is a way for students to be future-ready and earning money for college or another avenue and learning valuable job skills for after graduation. AP exams are coming up in about a month, which allows students choosing to take challenging classes to demonstrate their skills and potentially earn college credit. Robotics competed this past weekend at the district level, finishing first and earning the Impact Award, which are considered the highest honors a team can earn at a competition. They will compete in Cheney on Wednesday with all of the best teams in PNW, and if they do well, will move on to Nationals in Houston. And Camp Casey is currently happy to speak with many high school students partnering with the other students. This is an exciting opportunity for high school students to engage in their counterparts and for fifth graders, as this is the first time we've had Camp Casey for several years due to COVID-19.
All right, thank you. We're going to move into Section 5 of our agenda. Just as we move into that section, want to remind fellow board directors that we agreed to use Ron Robin to ensure that each member has equal opportunity to speak. We'll keep our discussion length for Agenda item in 20 minutes, which I will monitor, and individual board members' discussion of three minutes for Agenda item, which we will monitor for us. Each director's time will begin with the first one to speak. We will continue through the responses they provide. And that will bring us to Agenda 5.01, which is a special conversation with Kimani Leonard. She's going to come and speak about a really special experience she had with an internship recently. We'll welcome her up here with Director of Equity and Family Partnership, Mr. Tony Davis.
Give you the mic. Good evening. Kimani Leonard is going to share with you her internship experience. Let's share a little bit about her. Was reading the ninth grade, first year, pre-COVID. And there's people that you meet, we celebrate students here all the time. There's people that you meet, the students that you meet, that you immediately see that this person has something special. In this case, this young lady has something special about her. And driven, she was working for the school paper at the time, I think I call it paper still. And some of the stories that she was taking on show the level of care about Thomas High School and maturity that really caught me off guard. And kind of continued to stay in touch with each other as we take this journey through high school. And Allison Avenue, I wish she was here tonight. She should be the one standing here talking about this opportunity that she wanted to be managing. Hopefully, we can, if she's tuning in online, we can get a picture sent to her because she would enjoy, you know, how much she would enjoy being a part of this. But Kimani applied for an internship through the, I'll make sure I read it correctly, MLK Seattle organizing co-issue. And she received one of the grants, one of the opportunities, and created this incredible opportunity for her. She has done an incredible job of representing some of the high schools, Thomas School District, as being a part of this. And I'm going to step aside and let her share that experience.
Hi, my name is Laura Blair. Miss Agnew recently wrote this up to me. She actually just sent me a flyer and said that she thought it would be a great opportunity for me to branch out and get out of my comfort zone. So I took, I took the flyer and I talked to it, I talked to my parents. She, because I know she said that it was a big deal for us to leave. She got a, because she thought it would be a good opportunity for me to just spread my wings and do something that I hadn't really done before. So I filled out the application, which was just a description of myself, a paragraph, and a resume that I passed over, a recommendation. So I had this I knew, like, one recommendation. I thought I could be the rest of the participants. I submitted my application and waited to hear back. At first, I didn't, I didn't get it because I'd been a couple of weeks. And then eventually, I got a phone call saying that, I believe there was 50 applicants and there were six selected, so I had those six out of the 100. They, as I said, they let me know from over the phone. A few weeks after that, we had our first meeting in October, which was basically, we just watched how the meetings go and they presented us with basically where our, our job was as interns, which was, well, whatever the chair, should I more needed or find us to do, we would of course get on. But our main thing was to make, or come up with a youth event, so I will talk more about that as soon as I get there. As I said, there were six of us in total, all from different schools. I was only from Tacoma. And there was three sophomores and two seniors. They were people from Garfield, Cambridge, and the rest of what I can't remember at the moment. All of our meetings were on Zoom and started at 6:30, ended at like 8:00 PM. There was an agenda that was built. As far as my job as an intern goes, and my fellow interns, we were in charge of planning the youth leaders event that they did every year. Some of us had more specific jobs than others. Mine was taking care of social media marketing, so I had all of our social media, just Facebook, our website, et cetera. So my job was basically to market our event as well as help plan it. So I got some speakers to create videos because our youth leaders event goes on Zoom as well. That youth event was actually broadcasted on YouTube live and on radio at home. After that event, it was actually, it was actually the first one in about three years to back up that high amount of views. So we, we got interviewed by another news station after that. We started having more meetings as we, as we got closer to MLK Day. Our jobs were more so the march part, but we emcee the whole thing. It was held at Bearcreek High School, started on, and we had workshops meetings, so I helped do planning that. And then my main job was the march, which me and my fellow interns led. But to dive deeper into the whole organization, it's about, its majority is centered around in the MLK Day, but they actually start planning as soon as they have office and goes all the way, all the way out. I didn't, I didn't have a reunion until October. So to dive, I guess to dive deeper. Basically, they started way before I can even remember, but they started in order to bring more attention, they felt that more attention needed to be brought to MLK Day as a whole. So in order to do that, so we came up with this organization and brought people together who cared about MLK Day and thought it was a good mission. From there, they started to plan. As of recently, they just started doing interns about two years ago. So, and even as, even though I'm not an intern anymore, I still have a chance to go back and have a big role. So around after MLK Day, that's around when it ended and we all just came back together afterwards and had a kind of meeting about how it went. All of all, I really have the capital opportunity and I found it really great. I met a lot of people, a lot of future mentors that I now have contact with, and I can always reach out to. And I, I think it was, it's definitely something I would recommend to other people and something I would do again and I can, I'm going to do again next year. So not much things, but that's basically my overview.
I am so impressed with your story and all of the experiences that you've had. I would imagine that there's a lot that you've learned from this experience. Do you mind sharing some things that you'll take with you in your life moving forward?
Yeah, so most of these people actually have other jobs, but they just, they care about this organization so deeply that they offered them a few other things. And I was just, that's something that I learned, like, it just recommended, that some of the members had to do something so important that meant a lot to them. That's something I definitely, I would love to be committed to something so much that I dedicated time and worked hard for it to do. And just like, I think it's just the thing that's got me, it's like you don't have to do a whole lot to make your voice heard, as long as we, it took, it took a lot of work, but it was, it was honestly a march and march talks, and you just have to be brave enough to reach out to people and take the time to do things, so. It's just how far they can actually resonate with me. Because it did start as a really small group, and they eventually verbally reached out to school and a lot of people have heard of the example, two buildings that they work from, and I have a lot of contacts. So it's just, it's just a really great organization and inspiring to me personally.
Thank you.
Thank you for, I'm going to go some, give a little, thank you for coming and speaking. You're impressed, you have a moment. And I appreciated, like, you're in the hallway, I appreciated the story. I fully convinced that there's nothing more powerful, stronger than a young person with purpose. And I think that's, that you exemplify that. Maybe at first we were underwhelming, like you got, you said, like, probably sort of they slid the allocation to you, but I think a lot of times, those are really happy accidents and they, they did. So one question I have is, how have you been able to kind of share that experience with, like, fellow students? Because I think that's a message that me as a director here, as we think about how we can, how we can impact, like, what difference we can make for the students in this district. We can do so, we can only do so much of your, as a little thing. We have policies, we have things like that. You, you're in it, right? And you're a student, and you're there, and you're living it. So have you had any opportunities to share that with, with your fellow students and kind of give them that sense that, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding that it means something to me, I mean, anything to share there?
So at first, I didn't really mention it much, but some of my friends actually found out about it through some of my Instagram, through an article, things mostly. So I told them about it and at the class meeting, I mentioned it, and there were, there were some students who said it would be interesting to handle, and we'll get one next time, and actually ask for more information about it. So I, I talked about it with a few other students.
Just so many wonderful things about your story that come to mind. A lot of great modeling of, I think that you took away of leadership, of community service, of how to make an impact. One word in particular that you mentioned was bravery. Going out and doing something like this, getting out of your comfort zone, everything, it takes a lot of courage, bravery, emotion. And I, what I heard, and what I would love to maybe a little more about is that through it, you've got some confidence in you, I belong, I can make an impact, I am making an impact. Whereas maybe you didn't feel that by walking, you just had the tendency, walking as you were moving freight train like that. But you, you used your voice, you have a voice, and it really made a difference. So if there's any highlights on that, maybe you'd be willing to share up here. Really proud of the work that you did there, how you contributed to this great cause, and how well you represented the whole community there.
At first, like, the first meeting, I actually didn't talk at all, I was very nervous. Miss Agnew, she needs to reiterate how important she was, because she knows that's something I normally do, I'm more of a keeps-myself person and do what I think. So the fact that I got accepted, I think pushed me a little more, because I honestly didn't think I was going to get it. So that fact pushed me on a little bit, and as I, as I started, like, talking and listening, I saw people, these people were around each other and how they would just share ideas and make a lot of stuff. And I would do the same thing with my fellow interns. And it was just more so like, if I, I got, I told thinking was like, as long as I'm here, I might as well do something to add to what they're doing or try, at least try to make an impact. So at some point, I just, I just sometimes started to answer my ideas or something or asking, asking questions and just more and more started getting more comfortable, getting outside my comfort zone.
Well, continue to make brave choices in the after, can we make that to a point? Director Pendergraph, is there a comment or question? I don't want to leave you to hang it.
Thank you. You guys can hear me, okay? Kimani, you are the true champion of this story. I, I'm just so impressed by you, and I'm also kind of shocked to hear you say that you're not used to kind of speaking out or comfortable speaking in front of people because you're doing a beautiful job standing up there telling your story. So wonderful job there. I, like I said, you're the true champion of the story, but I would love to shine a light on the teacher-student relationship in this story, because I feel like, you know, when I was in high school, actually at our high school, I had a couple of teachers that I had that, that believed in me, and they inspired me to do maybe things that, that I wouldn't have done similar. I mean, nothing, nothing as grand as what you've done, but, but still, they, they played that role. And I just, I just would love to hear a little bit more about your relationship with Miss Agnew, because I'm just so grateful that she saw your brilliance and that she encouraged you to do this. So if you could speak a little bit about that relationship and just, I, I just, I love that part of the story. So is there anything else that you want to say about that?
Sure. So I met Miss Agnew when I wrote her journals last, last year. I actually, I, I actually had to send her a little bit of what I left. I sat like, I sat writing her eye line, and she came to writing her first story, and I didn't know what to write about, because it was my first time in journalism. And the only thing she told was to be bold, and I was like, okay, how do you guys? And she heard me and my friends having a conversation about like a lack of diversity, and she, she just kind of like came up, she, she was like, please do this for me, and then walked away, and I was like, okay. So I started writing, that's actually one of her days, because I, you know, I tend to try to intervene. So I was just in the LA side, because I'm only my favorite teacher, and I actually don't have her anymore, but I still go to her room all the time, because she's, she's, she actually made an impact on me, like, she, I feel like she's actually helping, you know, get out of my comfort zone and actually, whatever I thought is more so what I wrote in my journalism stories. And like, sometimes I thought I was being bold, and she was like, you can do better. So she'd tell me to rewrite it or something, so that's what I would do, and she would just motivate me to do my best. And actually, like, every time, every time I see her or when I leave her room, she, I, every time I leave, she opens her book and I just say thank you.
I love that, you are, you are. I love that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, this is, this is wonderful. Mr. David, I wanted you to know this. This is actually scheduled, life's funny, this was scheduled for another month. Fifty-five years ago tonight, you talked about your voice. Fifty-five years ago tonight, Dr. King lost his life. His voice was silent. It's more than voice was silent, but you, and the work that you do, and the reason you're working on, keeps that message, keeps his voice alive and the word alive. So keep doing what you know.
Yeah.
Somebody's talking. Can we get a picture? We have to send something, Mr. Teck, to you. So can we look out for a break here?
Get in there, Mr. Hanson.
I'm getting things.
Again, it might be easier to.
It feels like we should be down there, like, it's.
It feels weird that they're leaving it.
Yeah. Should we go down there?
No, it's.
You all look great. Thank you so much. All right, thank you very much. That'll bring us to Agenda Item 5.02, which is our grounds maintenance and custodial to Toma Chairs update. Operations supervisor Sean Kelly and Friends are going to be on their way. Hello? We got to follow that, huh? I was going to say that.
I have very confidence. That is why I work here. I'm not going to be as stupid. Tony, good job. That's why I work here, for that kind of stuff like that.
Mr. President, and Vice President, Board of Directors, students, Secretary of the Board of Directors, Superintendent Hanson, Assistant Superintendent Cloud, other directors and members of the audience, it's always a monitor coming for you because they follow what's going on.
That's daily, though.
Daily. It is always one of these, we have to, the maintenance and custodial department. We have some extra visitors tonight, I'll make sure we do spend more reviews today. Sitting right here is the Google Maps of the Toma Schools, Stacy Clemens, he's around, the reverse meal, but everything's hidden in the district. Tyler, everyone talk about Tyler. This is Steve, he's on our grounds maintenance right there. He grabs a weed eater, he's off in the bushes, he's happy for the day. Sarah Oakley right there, she's in grounds maintenance right there. We call her the bee whisperer, because if there's bees anywhere in the district, she goes and takes care of them. Spencer Sawyer is our grounds maintenance lead, and if he misses track or just trips something up, he's happy for weeks. So he gives a really good job, makes a really good job keeping the fields and everything going there, so. I want you to think about something before we get started. In this school district, whenever anything's one of the district, this team's involved so powerful, okay? Here's an example, this meeting tonight, okay? The HJC, Cody, I set the system for that. Mark Sutton, including Chuck Allois there. When we're done tonight, Tyler Ocock's going to come back and make sure this building's ready, so the superintendents and directors, everybody come back, the building's ready for their, normally we call it a learning environment in school, the business environment here at the district office. Take a lot of pride in that. Another example, Toma Cafe, it took a lot of custodians, a lot of maintenance staff, a lot of staff to put that together, one of the best events that we had in years, but our staff, we're hiding them, so a lot of them did that. Let's do one more thing really quick, is last year, right before I gave this presentation, five minutes before we started, I got a text from one of our coworkers, that coworker got diagnosed with cancer. Five minutes ruined my night, so I'm going to give a very good presentation tonight, you two, and talk to you about the front acres. Since then, employees through cancer, retreat, and everything like that, if you talk to Lena Morris in HR, that custodian have more sickly information than probably almost anybody else in the district, so you can talk to HR about that. That shows how much our team cares about each other, this is district-wise, so just shows that really quick, so people do care about each other in this district. Okay, AJ, this is new.
What do you want to say?
So, you can all more shot.
Okay, I'll be there. I have not taken a service training, I'm just training myself, so. You did a fine job. Thank you very much. Okay, here's our four responsibilities, police, and most important is values and communication, service, and cooperation, okay? So right there, I'll kind of do a question, but I want to make sure you know the team members that go on that before. Head deputy, making specialist, Melissa Clark-Hill, head custodian at Lake Woolness, and Tina Angel right here is the department minister's assistant who runs everything. He also do, so. Okay, and who's next?
What do you?
I don't know.
The clicker?
I just thought of you. All right, I might have to look at these pictures a little bit, because I didn't make myself so familiar with this. We'll go through this real quick. We have our entire department going over G U L training together. We did that at high school, we do this twice a year, we break up in two different teams because there's just so many of us. But everyone that wants to, it needs to be, is trained and ticketed on G U L training. You have Boogmas outside, it's actually a really fun day. And Sean always writes us for block hours, so everyone attends.
I got that for somebody else.
Yeah. Down here at the bottom left, that's our head custo, one of our head custodians and one of our lead custodians, thank you. Shows that they're pretty close and comfortable with each other, I think in that picture. Cody. Center bottom, we have two of our maintenance team and a trainer, they're doing an HVAC training on the new system that, thank you, that everyone approved here in this room to get done. So that is our Rock Creek attic that was just giving the training up for that. And yours truly right here, uh huh, and then Mark Sutton, working with Paul Gardner, our principal over at Stone Trail, responding to the emergency. Very near occurrence, we, we work together, that's pretty much the gist of it. We respond and we make sure things do the same here. Our goals are on the left side, those were our primary goals, and these are the key actions that we've been taking to get better at our goals and to accomplish them. We have, yeah, so we do do the survey. We did this at the beginning when we came back to visit you in October. Our colors were from the top there, red's not good, green's good. Well, we did this at the beginning of the year, then we just did this, what, two weeks ago, maybe three? And all of our colors either stayed the same or improved. So that's our overall goal of this entire Toma Chairs campaign, if that's what people want to call it. But supporting, empowering others, communications, who we are, treat coworkers, staff equally, every individual's appreciated. Well, these all kind of play in together with each other. We've, we've been having scheduled, we've been scheduling lots of training during off school days, lift trainings, plus we've had all of our boiler trainings, HVAC trainings, all these different things that we're catching into it. And like I said, Sean's bribing us with food, so majority of the people are attending these. You know, I'm trying to take out the words "I" and "me" and things out of our vocabulary because we're "us" and then if we, we've been, but where credits do, Tina's been working on getting, with AJ, or Cia, working on getting our webpage built, as we speak, very preliminary stages from what I understand, but they're, they're getting there. Communication with staff, we're just continuing doing what we're doing, we're just continuing communicating and getting the message out there and try to work with each other. Questions, will you give them, I guess? More pictures, because those are fun. We've got grounds up there, making sure that our climate culture and our sites look beautiful and representable and welcoming to our students and staff and us. But frankly, it's nice for us, so we're in a beautiful environment. So any videos down here? Sorry, guys. And. It's a bubble wagon. First Tony. There he is. So Tony coming in and working with us and working with the Toma Cares and the equity training. That was another non-student day. Came in and shared a couple stories with us and let up with Tony and speak, and myself. Thanks, Tony. And then we have Judy Bellville, principal at the high school, collaborating with our staff, with our, uh, maintenance staff, custodian. Very collaborative. So our climate culture is sense of belonging for all, provide time for reflection, encourage and appreciate commonalities and differences, partnership with Green Team. All yellow, continue to work on these. These are goals for our overnight items, but continue with school admin or connect with school admin, to determine recognition system, will be incorporated into the whole school plan. Create listening time with Sean, which, that's, just sounds funny to me, but he's, uh, continuing to check on us regular basis. The guy's always going around like, should we have everything we need, asking if we did anything. Coordinate with equity director, as you've seen in the picture before, um, I see Tony more in the last six months than I have thirteen years working here. And that's, I didn't spend a lot of time at high school, but very, very visible now. And continue setting up teams with, with Green Team leaders. We're still jumping this out, of course. You know, there's excuses here and there, but we let him for a while and we're coming back in and doing our best. And we'll go to the next photo. And allow. Push the buttons for you.
Push the button. The fun little pictures for our high expectations are our lovely grounds crew trying to get school open for this amazing winter we had. And the new ladder at the high school that was installed and help get the filters up safely, so the custodians can change the filters in the HVAC. Our banners that were hung at for the Toma Schools Foundation. And there we are assessing the damage from our amazing flood that happened in December at Lake Wilderness. For us, the high expectations is really just a lot about training and Sean and some custodians, we have a point two double, a conference to bring back some information so we can have better training or better knowledge on what we need to do. Um, the prioritizing buildings to make sure grounds and facility are safe is just everyday rains and shine, sun and whatever wind, it doesn't matter. We're out there just trying to make sure they can be opened and ready, and that's a great one for us. We just continue doing what we're doing. And then the, and they respond to, we just take pride in, if there's an email sent, we make sure that we respond quickly, even if it's a, I'll put a work order in. And as soon as we get our work orders in, Sean assigns them and maintenance and grounds are pretty good to try to get things taken care of, emergency or not, they're there to help us, so. And we're right with them.
Got the wellness portion. And then go to the compass, um, manner, uh, the upper left is Steve Segura. He, we had, uh, Lake Wilderness, a, um, wild squirrel that was on the loose and he kind of ran it in and was able to help get it under control and calm it down.
Can you see that on his shoulder?
Calm.
It's on his shoulder right there.
The squirrel, like.
Yes.
It's on.
Only in Toma.
Yes, Segura. Uh, we have Steve Reese in the middle at our annual barbecue, he's cooking hot dogs and hamburgers and he's doing that in the obvious time. And Kyle handed out shirts in support of the district, showing their support to the, the staff and appreciation that the district has for our, our swamp. And Steve Segura is down on the bottom left, does Elvis Presley, who's at the music in the park over the summer. And in the other picture, we have about thirty or more, um, staff members that were there who have been supporting them. Who's there, but we had a good number turn out to support each other better. Um, on this slide is mainly talking about wellness and it has a lot to do with Liz Seber. And we have been in contact with her to work towards things that we can do to and support our staff. One thing that I mentioned to him, reached out, or we mentioned to reach out to Liz was, um, trying to get a mini massage, ten minutes, sign, a sign up sheet for ten minute massage for each of the custodial or the grounds crew, just so they can come in and just feel a little bit of time of comfort and mental wellness. So we're working on trying to get that in on, on student days, so. And that's. Oh, yeah, and Sean.
Now, I'd like partnerships, right? I'd volunteer to take this thing right here. Partnerships, we can't do it by ourselves, you know, it's a big philosophy I have. In this picture, right here on the left, is people got promoted to the custodial maintenance department. That's the director of HR right there, Master Jack, right there, Tracy Cross. And the assistant director of HR, Scott Mitchell, the background, and there's a show of snow. And then over here, we have this flood, uh, over at, I mean, I had the pipes leak over Summit Trail. See Paul Blue there, and the custodian, uh, pushy, squeegee in the water back. And then running the machine there, go back there, is, uh, associate principal, Paul Burton, which shows everybody's chips up whenever something's going on. It's really important that you may have job titles, but when it comes to make sure things are ready for the students, everybody, just, I can tell you stories about every single director that's been here. It was, and staff, with teachers, everybody, and they always step up when we need something for learning environment. Next, please. That's kind of it, right there, um, working on teamwork, positive thinking. One thing that we're gonna really work hard on is, we've noticed is, when the custo-, head custodians are invited to a weekly meeting with the principals with partnership like this, when they, some of the principals are really busy and they don't, I don't think we're, they don't have time, but sometimes they just, we gotta work on the communication of the principals. Our advent team's a very big, if I call a principal up, say we need this, or the head custodian says we need this, they're on top of it. I just noticed that we just have a fifteen minute meeting, either in the hallway, lunchroom, or just fifteen, or fifteen minutes, they're like this, and we're something really good. So that's something we're gonna kind of focus on, uh, in the future. And every time I talk to a principal about it, they're, they're receptive to that. And I can give you tons of examples. Melissa and her advent team, every Monday, eight, three, just about that. You guys get together and she gives really good input and it just works really good, so. On that note, that's kind of it. Do you have any questions? They're here to answer your questions. Hold on, come on.
Yep. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Uh, so, come back at Tony. Uh, we recently hired an elementary director for teaching and learning. And, um, I feel like it was three weeks ago or so, um, maybe four weeks ago, when I got an opportunity to, uh, spend the day with her. And, um, we toured all of our sites, elementary sites. Um, and at the end of the day, we spent about six hours together. At the end of the day, I was asking her to reflect back to me, um, what stood out um, around our school system. Um, the first thing that she talked about was how happy everybody was. Um, you go in a building and people are smiling, kids are happy, they really like being here. The second thing she, uh, commented on was how amazing our facilities are, um, and what incredible shape they are. Um, she said from all of her research before putting in for the job, and stuff, you can see buildings online and you roughly get their age, but walking through them, uh, the cleanliness and the shape of them, um, really stood out to her, so obviously gratitude, uh, to a whole bunch of people out there, including some of the people in the room, so thank you so much.
When I think about Toma Cares, you all exemplify every single one of these, these goals that we've set for our district over and over again. I think you highlighted some of them here, but there are a million more that we could, we could draw attention to. Um, so I would love to know how you all are setting priorities or your priority list for continuing to improve and grow and continuing to exemplify all of these goals.
Those are pretty cool.
Yeah.
I prioritize my goal by, like, what are your goals? Our goals, to my, um, I, we, we try to building the building, we talk with a lot of custodians, we interact with a lot of people, so I would, I can really get a feel for what the wants and needs is by just, by how many people I talk to on a daily basis. And then that's how I prioritize, or we prioritize, because we collaborate all day, every day. That's all we do is talk to each other. Whether it's good, bad, whatever it is, we, we communicate a lot, um, with our core group and just going out, talking with the individual sites, getting a feel for them, coming back and talking to each other, whether it's gossip or not, it is, you can make it positive. And that's kind of where we're heading in this direction with Toma Cares. Just getting the wants and needs of others and collaborating how we can make it more apparent and more available. On these non-student days, what do people want to talk about, what do people want to do? Do they want to do training, or they want to do team building, or do they want to do games? Whatever it is, so. Sean and Tina have been a great group to work with on all that as well. That's, I'll add something. Add a little bit too. Also, I want to, um, big shout out to Kyle Moon and Tracy Cross, because we're always kind of we're ready to do what it means, resources for, but training you means, so they're really good supportive of that. And of course, the legendary Lord Cloud is always, he was pointing to how to, how to, what we need to do, tweaking them up too. These things, just make sure everybody feels like they belong and we take their input and we work with them. And then if you have a question, we'll get it.
That definitely answers it. And I, before I pass the mic on, the figurative mic on, um, I do want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Every single building I go to, there are members of your team who are working night and day to make it beautiful for our students. And it really shows. If I pull into a parking lot and I see the, um, there was somebody, I, I'm trying to think of a couple months ago, I pulled into a parking lot and, um, somebody was, was power pressure washing the sidewalks. And there was so much heart and care that was put into that one task. I couldn't see who it was, because of course it was covered with like all of the weatherproofing, yeah, exactly. But just the time and care and attention that was going into that activity was mind blowing to me. And I could give a million other examples of people who were, who were really demonstrating at high expectations, so thank you.
Okay, you said a little bit. Okay. The, um, thing that comes to mind, and I love the pivot in the language that you are using from the high line to our need and so forth. Um, the thing that, well, one thing that comes to mind, I was at a event recently, it was at high school, and, um, there was a piece of trash on, on the floor. And, um, there was about five of us, we all observed it all the same. I was kind of speaking to the partnership piece that you mentioned. Um, everybody was like a fight to get to it first, you know, we gotta, we gotta keep this thing pristine, it's, it's pretty beautiful, I'm gonna keep it that way. And, and it was, um, uh, it was just an attitude that I think we have here, and it's really a tribute to the work that you're doing, um, to, to keep things that way. Much of what you talked about tonight, um, doesn't necessarily have to do with the technical parts of your jobs. It's all about how the work gets done and, and it, it really feels as though it's a different mindset. Um, but I, I have a feeling that it contributes to the work that you're doing. It contributes to the technical part of your work and that collaborative piece and everything else. I'm wondering if there's something that can be said about, just about that, that feeling you have about how these advancing, these goals has contributed to people with a piece with a different layer and a better way.
Here's an example, um, Spencer, Sarah and Steve just got back from playground special training last week. It was two big fours, eight hours, and keep them sitting for eight hours is a hard thing to do, but they did it for a pro home. And, um, Cody has been to several H V A C classes all over the place. Melissa has been to several classes on this. On, on spring break next week, we're having training on what's called the I MOP machine, so they can, they can build it a lot better. So they're all getting certified in certain different ways, and then they bring it all together, so it's really fun, because when they show up at campus, they always make sure they take the custodians, show them what they're doing, what they're working on. They're always training the next group going forward. Sometimes we give a couple custodians that train them on, I do things like Rick Burden at high school, now that worked a long time. So this is always a brush training, but it's going on there. That's just a big part of it, it's training to make everybody feel like they know what's going on. If they have questions, we respond back to their questions. Did that answer it?
It does, I think.
Somebody else wants to go again?
Yeah, no, just, um,
Yeah, no, just, um, just a, a profound thank you. I think, uh, I was on a long, long run, so I actually ran every building. So I hit every building, it was really cool. It's interesting to go on the building grounds where there's no kids there. Because you actually really look at the buildings and I think it's, um, they're, it's, I, I'll speak for you personally. I think some, it's like the economy, you don't always know, it's similar, something's breaking, which is an unfortunate place to be in. Um, but I want you to know that as I ran it and I was on the grounds and I would kind of stop and most of my kids have been to one of these schools at one time or another, and so it was actually kind of a profound experience for me. But just to be there and kind of see it and be appreciative of it. And as we think about growing, you know, the Toma One Hundred and what this district's going to look like in five, ten, fifty, twenty, twenty-five, fifty years. Um, to know that as we add, we'll have more buildings, we'll have bigger buildings. We're taking really good care of the things that we have now. And that's kind of how I, it's kind of how I, I took what you said is we're just, you're, you're kind of the, the tip of the stewardship over the resources that we've, we've provided for our students. So I'm, I'm really grateful for that. I think as, as my kids get older and they're about to, you know, like the next several years, just start moving out of the district, I'll have images and I'll have experiences of being on grounds and being in the buildings and being in the classrooms and doing those things. And so, um, I think what you do is more impactful than just swapping old filters and, you know, doing maintenance and things like that. It really is, it really is deeper, so thank you for that. And then finally, if there's ever an opportunity for a board member, for instance, to like ride a tractor or something, I'd love to do stuff like that. I'm more than happy. I haven't, I haven't got a plug in, but I, I took that as a, we can talk. That's, that's a good, don't let a lawyer on a tractor, there's, you know, I mean, there's probably something to that.
Come out, come out and grab the, come out and grab the big mower.
All settled for a weed eater.
Uh, does Director Finnergraff?
I, yes, I just wanted to say thank you. The, the thing that stands out most, um, to me is the relationships piece. Um, I, um, I just really appreciate the fact that you guys have the relationships, that, the relationships that you do within your own department, but also the relationships that you have, um, spanning across departments and also with the kids. Um, I'll never forget the, the little friendship that my son had, um, with the custodian at Lake Wilderness when he was in, you know, in like first grade, I think it was. Um, and it just was so heartwarming and it really spoke to me that, um, it just emphasized the fact that there's so much more to, um, a child's experience of their school day outside of just their teacher. Um, it's also, it's, there are many hands that, um, that the children pass through each day. And, um, so I just wanted to say thank you so much for the beautiful buildings, the relationships, um, and just all the, the love and care you put into your job, so thank you.
Olivia.
Yeah, um, just, I was just wanted to say thank you, like, as a student, um, it's so impactful. All of the work that you guys do to keep all of our, all of our schools, like, clean and maintained and ready for us to learn. Um, I know myself that high schoolers are not always the most clean or respectful of the, like, school and the facilities we have, so, um, we, we really appreciate all of the work that you do to, uh, make sure that we're able to learn and thrive every day. Thank you.
Anything else? Anytime, like I said before, you want to come see Ryan Machin, on a week here, you're more than welcome. As we said, superintendent, we'll make sure we're ready time for you. Cody's really good at training, taking people up with the HVAC system. Spencer will make sure that you drive machines if you want to. And JC will show you around the district. For a time, I was a licensed system operator.
So we see your background.
The most important thing that we all appreciate is when we're working on things, we're making sure the students are familiar with the room. So that's important, and the staff is taking care of you. Thanks for all of your support, especially thank you to, um, the leadership team, we have a lot, we can tell we have a lot of support. Thank you. Yeah, um, we've got a little bit left to go here, guys, so feel free to step out if you need to. It's, uh, early morning right now, so we won't be available by any. I appreciate all of you, thank you very much. And that brings us to agenda item five point zero three, which is the first reading of revised policy sixteen twenty. Board superintendent relations and board staff communications. And Superintendent Hans is gonna present and answer some questions for us.
But I want to start by thanking T R for the progress in updating policies and all the work that, and attention she's put into it. And to the directors as well, um, the last three years, there's been a lot of policy work, so I'm very appreciative. This one in particular is, um, bringing us up to date for W A S T A. Um, W A S T A did not update the policy, we just have updated ours. Um, so the language, um, the sentence that's added in there has not changed any practice that we've had. And the R C W reference down below, um, has been on the policy, but was not on ours, so we added it.
Question?
Uh, just something quick, Mike, when, when I was, uh, reading through this, kind of getting ready, I just took some time to reflect on, um, the, the work that we've done as a, as a team, as a system. And, um, uh, discussing this relationship, we've spent a lot of time and the impact that it has on our system. And I'm just really thankful and appreciative of, um, the, the work that this team has done to pay attention about this relationship and keeping strong and effective for our school system. And I'm really thankful for the part that you played in this team significantly, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, and, uh, I guess I'll put that right back on you guys as well, the conversations that I have with, um, my colleagues and what I learned about relationships between boards and superintendents, um, is a pretty special place.
Uh, moving around a lot, we're gonna move on to agenda item five point zero four, which is the first reading of revised policy sixty-one fourteen on gifts. And Chief Captain Elder Dan is here to present his questions. Hi, guys.
Hello.
Welcome.
A couple of updates on policy sixty-one fourteen around gifts, gift interchange here are changing the threshold for water group of five thousand, ten thousand dollars. You're probably wondering why that is. Um, dating back into our, as far as I can see, uh, this policy was implemented in nineteen ninety-eight. So you can always get that five thousand dollar threshold in sixty-eight. You were to put five thousand dollars into your favorite inflation calculator for compensation worth in today's twenty twenty-three. Comes out at ninety-three hundred dollars for easily, I think, ten thousand, it's a fair safe number there. Um, another question, you're probably wondering if this change is, okay, well, the board isn't improving these donations, who is? I have to say that that is me, uh, in nineteen. Uh, we review every donation that the district gets, no matter how big or how small, whether it's a recent nineteen thousand dollar donation, uh, one of our elementary schools received a new sound system, or a two dollar donation that the parent makes every month, um, for her students classroom. We review it, track it, we log in, make sure that the money's being spent.
Great, any questions? Something that just came to my mind is relative to this idea of conditional gifts. And, uh, things that come to the board, uh, we, we often receive gifts from P T A's, or P T O's, or community organizations and so forth. Uh, I don't remember recalling, seeing restrictions on them, so I'm just wondering how often I do give kind of donations that are conditional or restricted. Pretty good thing at all.
Not that I've seen most, definitely, but at the time, we do receive large donations, maybe large, maybe a thousand dollars. Uh, they come with a grant agreement or written agreement that says these ones are to be used twice a year. Most of the times, it's just a little place to stay, school, of course, it's a, do you want a field trip, etc., etc., very, not very often, we use, uh, type of restrictions.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll keep moving along, thanks, Bill. Excuse me. Uh, next, uh, section six, which is the meeting management portion of our agenda. Uh, and to item six point zero one, which is an action item to approve our consent agenda. I mean, please have a motion to approve our consent agenda. Sure, I move to approve, uh, act, uh, item six point zero one, action to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a vote of aye, the motion passes for zero. And that brings us to agenda item six point zero two, which is another action item to approve our certificated personnel report. And please have a motion to approve our certificated personnel report. Sure, I move to approve agenda item six point zero two, action to approve the certificated personnel.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a vote of aye, the motion passes for zero, which brings us to agenda item seven point zero one, which is our chairman at seven twenty-five. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.